Good afternoon. Study session, Mayor, City Council meeting, 4:00 P.M., Wednesday, September 8th, 2021 City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order. Please rise from the floor, Mr. President. May I have a word to you, please?
Pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Presentation. John?
Mr. Mayor, this is the time and place in the meeting for a presentation by the Public Safety Retirement System. We have Mr. Clark, and it's too far. Can you?
Partridge.
Mr. Clark Partridge from the PSPRS, who's here to give us a presentation. The presentation that he's going to give us is shown on this screen over here, Mr. Mayor, and then he'll be over here on this screen here. So with that, I'll introduce the American Council to Clark, and he's on the screen over here, sir. Mr. Partridge, it's all yours, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to present. This is an informal presentation. Obviously, this is for your benefit, so we will go through a few concepts, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have as you go through. This is a presentation that we've shared with a number of councils and county boards and supervisors, so this should be fairly good information for you. We recognize this is a very important decision for you to make, and we want to be available to provide whatever information we can from our perspective to be able to help you in making your decisions. So with the next slide, Slide 2, we get just an overview of all of the retirement systems in Arizona. Of course, the Arizona State Retirement System is the default retirement system. That's the largest retirement system. That's where most employees have their retirement. The Public Safety Personal Retirement System is for law enforcement officers, firefighters. Correctional Officer Retirement Plan is for correctional officers, detention, probation, dispatch, et cetera. The elected official retirement plan that you're familiar with for state local elected officials, judges. And then Phoenix and Tucson each have their own retirement plan, but they participate in PSPRS for police and fire. So the ones that are older there, the PSPRS Corp. and EOR, are all administered by PSPRS. So the next slide, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about where we've been, where we're at, and what's to come in the future. So we move on to Slide 4. Let's talk a little bit about how we got to the situation where we're at. The biggest culprit that contributed to unfunded pension liabilities for PSPRS and Corp. and EOR is the permanent benefit increase. And the way the permanent benefit increase worked, and by the way, it did account for, during pension reform, that analysis was done, is the PBI accounted for approximately 80% of the pension problem. And so that was the target. That was the main thing, the principal thing that was addressed and corrected in pension reform. And so the way it worked is 50% of the investment returns above 9% were removed from the pension calculation and set aside for these permanent benefit increases. And then, of course, as the name implies, not only were that 50% of those investment returns set aside, but also those were permanent benefit increases and resulted in increased liabilities. Another thing that was an impact of the PBI was the disproportionate impact to most rural Arizona plans. As you know, the cost of living in the urban areas are higher than they are in the rural areas. Consequently, the salaries for police and firefighters in the rural areas are lower than what they are in urban areas, and that results in a lower pension. Now, well, the way the permanent benefit increase was calculated, they would take the amount that they set aside for the permanent benefit increase, and instead of doing it based upon the pension amount that's being received, they just divided by the head count. And so that resulted in a higher percentage increase to those in rural areas generally than what they were in urban areas. The law was going on for 28 years of these actuarial assumptions. Because the actuarial assumptions, what they did is when they looked forward, they said, what's the assumed rate of return? Oh, that's 7.3%. Well, if it's 7.3%, that's less than 9%. So based on the way that they do their calculations, there is no permanent benefit increase anticipated. However, when investment returns were above 9%, there was this actuarial gain, but we only got to keep half of that and half of it in and created this PBI. So this was by far the biggest single impact to pension plans. Now, if we go to the next slide, Slide 5, let's talk a little bit about what happened to address this. So first of all, back in about 2011, '12 timeframe, the legislature tried to fix it. So last one created Tier 2. So the Tier 1 employees were the ones that were in existence up until 2011. But when the legislature tried to fix it, then that created Tier 2 employees. The courts came along, and they determined that it's constitutionally protected, and therefore the legislature didn't have the authority to make those changes. And so then the legislature referred it to the vote of the people, which was Prop. 124 for PSPRS and 125 for Corp. and EOR. And it's important to note that those did pass. They created a new cost of living adjustment up to a max of 2%. And that's a lot easier to forecast and project and plan for than the PBI was. But it's also important to note that this did not, it stopped digging the hole deeper, but it did not fill the hole when it comes to the unfunded liabilities. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. A few other things that have changed and to help create a more stable plan going forward is that the, there's been new actuaries come in, there's new actuarial assumptions. The board has adopted these new actuarial assumptions to be able to avoid negative amortization. What was happening with some of the amortization is it was on a percentage of pay basis. It assumed that there was going to be a 3.5% growth to the payroll and going forward. And so it assumed that if you're doing it as a level percentage of pay, that you're going to pay more in the future than you are currently, because the payroll's going to be larger, and if you're keeping the level percentage of pay, then you're just paying out a larger amount going forward. But what's been happening since the Great Recession, of course, there's not been a lot of inflation, and salaries have not been growing at 3.5% per year. And so what that means is, is that you have, the payroll, the amounts that paid in with the payroll has not kept up with what was expected to be paid. And that's equivalent to when you have a mortgage, you don't pay all of the interest related to the payment calculation. And so now what happens is the principal balance goes up instead of down in those types of situations. And that's essentially what's been happening with the, with one of the actuarial assumptions. And then there's other actuarial assumptions the board has looked at in trying to say, what do we need to do to address things so that we can get on a course to be able to pay off these, this unfunded liability and to make sure that we're making the progress that we're planning to do. Investment allocation has been changed, and that asset allocation, the strategic asset allocation drives about 90 to 92% of the investment returns. Of course, the biggest factor is the market itself, and these asset allocations are all built upon changes and differences from the market itself so that you can make more or la, or higher or lower investment returns in relation to the market as a whole. The status of turnover, the Chief Investment Officer, Marcus Dean, has been there for about, in his position for about two years now. So there's been a number of changes that have occurred since pension reform, since a lot of these actuarial changes, et cetera, that have been built into the investment portfolio to be able to have a better long-term course and trajectory on investment returns, particularly since the PBI has now been corrected, and we don't have the problems of taking those higher, 50% of those higher investment returns out of the portfolio. These are some changes that have been implemented since Mike Townsend became the administrator in December of 2019. He implemented a new general ledger system for accounting. It's improved the accounting for a number of things. Also, the cash and contribution processing cycles from an accounting perspective have been reviewed and approved. New auditors put Marson Allen, they have a role in nationwide for having some expertise in pensions. We've had new leadership positions. He hired Mike Smerek as the Deputy Administrator. Mike Smerek was my Deputy State Controller for about 14 years in the state of Arizona, and I would trust Mike Smerek with my life. And so he is top-notch. The CFO, John Wolken, came across from, he was the Controller for the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System, which administers Medicaid for the state of Arizona. For, he was there for about 20 years. Before that, he was the manager over Interlock for the state of Arizona. The Controller, Jack Jordan, he is, was over the cost allocation for state agencies, helping them with that, also negotiating with federal government on the statewide cost allocation plan and some issues there. The Interlocker has about 20 or so years of government experience. She came from the city of Scottsdale. So a lot of good government expertise, and these are just some of the ones that were the. When Mike Townsend came on board in December 2019, he was the only CPA in the finance area. Now there are five CPAs in the finance area. Actuarial modelers, you may have seen these, those that were developed with our actuaries for each of our retirement systems and their tools for employers to use, and they're just like the actuarial valuations that are built on, they're directionally correct, they're not intended to be exactly precise because the actuarial assumptions change from year to year. Investment returns are going to be greater or lower than what the assumed rate of return are. So every year that we have a new actuarial valuation, that's going to course correct for all of those deviations from the assumptions, and it's going to have it to change the projection in one direction or another depending upon what those changes actually are. IT security, things to keep up with, I'm sure you're all familiar with, that you guys look at all the time, cyber risks and other types of things. So there's a lot of ongoing investment that's happening to make sure and protect our employer and employee information in our system, as well as other security upgrades to, from an IT perspective, to drive more efficiency as an organization. That's an opportunity, we talked about that, the asset allocation, talked about some of the board actuarial changes. The negative amortization has been corrected. And also another thing that came about as of, it was required as of pension reform, but the Advisory Committee, which is made up of ongoing stakeholder groups, law enforcement, firefighters, et cetera, are all, and local government, employers. The League of Cities and Towns is a part of this Advisory Committee, as well as the County Supervisors Association. So having ongoing dialogue on a regular basis is really, really important. And certainly, you can always reach out to the league and have, if you have any questions at all about that Advisory Committee or want to have any input into that process, you can do so through that. But we also have ongoing dialogue with stakeholders, just like yourselves and this type of forum, to be able to hear from you what your concerns are, and hopefully be able to answer your questions, but for those things that we don't have answers to, to be able to take that and take that back and have input into processes as we consider those things going forward. So going forward to the next slide, Slide 7, we're going to go through and give you an example of what the defined benefit actually is. This is just a real quick example. Of course, the benefits are calculated by statute. They're defined, and the calculation and the multipliers are all played out in statute. So just for an example there, using Tier 1, an employee with 25 years of service, that would entitle them to have a multiplier of 62.5%. If we assume that their average compensation in this example was $80,000, then you would take 62.5% times that, 80,000, and that would result in an annual pension of $50,000 for that individual. Another thing that we want to do is try to talk a little bit about how this estimated liability is calculated. Now, the estimated liability is calculated by the actuary. What they do is they take all of these future benefit calculations in accordance with the statute, based upon how long people were assumed, estimated to be to work, what their estimated salaries were going to be, et cetera, and they calculate what that benefit payment is going to be. And then they discount that to the present value using the assumed rate of return. Okay? And all of these benefit calculations and, of course, that discounting are all based on actuarial assumptions. We'll go to the next slide, Slide 8. And essentially, what we do to try to, you look at that unfunded liability amount, how we get there, is we compare the assets, their value as of today, and the liabilities as of, that have been earned as of today, and we compare those two amounts. If the difference is overfunded, if the assets are greater than the liabilities, then it's overfunded. If the assets are less than the liabilities, then there's an unfunded liability. Okay? So now let's look at this. This is a table that will really break these pieces down in a little bit more clarity. Again, I talked about those future value of the benefits and how they're discounted using assumed rate of return, 7.3% to a present value. That's what this bottom bar represents. That's the present value of all the future benefits that are expected to be paid. Now, if you look at the actuarial accrued liability, that, that's those present value of future benefits that have been earned as of the actuarial valuation date. The most recent one was June 30 of 20. Okay? So as of June 30, 20, what's been earned as of that point in time? Now, not what's going to be earned for the work that's going to be performed in the future, but what has been earned as of that point in time. So if somebody is 20 years into their estimated 25-year career, they would, an accrued actuarial valuation is as of the 20 years that have been earned, not the five years that are going to be earned going forward. Those five years in this example that would be earned going forward would be the normal costs that are going to be paid for those future salary earnings that are going to be earned in the future as opposed to what's been earned up to this point. And that's what's going to be, that's what you pay in normal cost that is going to ultimately get you enough money to be able to pay for those future benefits. And that plus the investment return, normal assets. Now, if you look at the assets as of the valuation date, as of June 30 of 20, that is the amount of assets, that's the value as of that date. And if it's less than the actuarial accrued liability, then you have an unfunded actuarial accrued liability, or UAAAL, and that unfunded actuarial accrued liability needs to be amortized over a remaining useful life. I believe you're over now a 15-year life for that unfunded liability. And what that's designed to do is catch you up to the AAL. Okay? So you're funded at 100% of that AAL. Okay? So these are just some key concepts of, that we talk about here. Now let's go through and compare that, look at it a little bit different, and we're looking at this from multiple perspectives, and using those perspectives helps you understand. I talked about 100% funded. The funded ratio or funded percentage is a common comparison and the way from look at where you stand right now in your plan. And that way, we talked before about subtracting the planned assets from the planned liabilities to determine whether you're over or underfunded. Here, if you take the planned assets and divide by the present value of the liabilities, that's going to give you your funded percentage. If the assets are exactly the same as that accrued actuarial liability, then it would be 100% funded. If it's less than the current value of the actuarial liability, it would be less than 100%. If it's, if the assets are greater than the liability, it's going to be more than 100% funded. Okay? But just remember that we discounted that liability to a present value as of today. Next year, there will be one less year of that liability being discounted, so we know that that liability is going to go up by that 7.3% going forward, because that's the discount rate. Some people think of this as, well, you're charging us interest. It really isn't an interest charge, but what we're doing is we're discounting that present to a present value, that future value at this 7.3% discount rate. So what's going to happen is, is that future value is going to increase at that 7.3% next year, because it's going to be discounted one less year. Okay? So now let's look at a basic pension funding equation. This is how pensions are funded. Where the money comes from? It comes from contributions and investment income. Where the money goes? It goes to pay benefits and then expenses of the pension plan. My thought, biggest number in this equation is the benefit calculation. The expenses are, by being in a agent multiple player plan, the expenses that it takes to invest the money and administer the money, et cetera, are all shared amongst the participants. And so that helps keep those expenses down much lower than if you had your own plan and you're administering it yourself. But where the money comes from, obviously, is that the actuaries, again, are assuming investment income of 7.3%. But if the assets are less than that, then those assets aren't earning the assumed rate of return, so investment income will be less than what the actuaries are forecasting or projecting. And then therefore, that piece of the equation has to be made up with additional contributions, which is that unfunded liability contribution piece in addition to the normal contribution piece of the contributions. Okay? So now that we're looking at this equation, and we've talked about some of these concepts a little bit, it's probably starting to have some of these things follow to place a little bit more. So again, we're just going to recap a few principles that we've already talked about. The PSPRS liabilities, Tiers 1 and 2 are, these don't liabilities are employer by employer. In Tier 3, they're pooled amongst all these participating employers. The Tiers 1 and 2 are employer by employer. Right now, Tier 3 is over 100% funded, just a bit over 100% funded. But for Tiers 1 and 2, again, we haven't filled the hole, we've stopped the digging, but we haven't filled the hole. And keep in mind that these pension liabilities are debt. If you look at your financial statements, one of the largest, if not the largest liability on your financial statements is probably your pension liability. And they're constitutionally protected. Okay? So these are, these are really debts that are up. So one thing to think about, and especially our own retirement, every dollar that you contribute today can earn interest on into the future and therefore reduces the amount that you have to put in in the future. But the opposite is true as well. Every dollar that you delay in paying and you don't put in is a lost opportunity to earn investment returns and is going to result in higher contributions later on. So if we go to the next slide, this is Slide 13, just to do a gap check. We're going, this, this represents where the money comes from on PSPRS and of the system as a whole. Approximately 17% comes from employee employer contributions for the normal cost. The net, the net investment income is 45%, and then the employer contributions on the unfunded liability is about 38%. Now let's look at this a little bit differently. These are, this gives you, this is the funding ratios and the decline in those funding ratios. You can see that before pension reform, the funding ratios were going down. Before this, years before this, it was at 100% and then we'll go up. And so this decline down to, you can see, about 46, 47% during pension reform, and now it's gradually starting to go up. Okay? So now let's look at where we're at for, as of June 30, 20, last year. Where are the employers stacked in relation to each other? You see, I use local gallows, police for this example, you're 51.1% funded. So you're in this bend right here. That's where most of the employers work. The highest number of employers, 43, are in that bend. Now, there's a significant number of employers that were higher funded from you, and a lot of those frankly were some of the lower, some of the smaller employers. Some of the larger employers have lower funding levels than you did. So that's what, how that works out to get to those funding levels that we saw on the previous slide. Now let's go to the next slide. This slide is going to show on the contribution rates, and you can see how leading up to pension reform, the contribution rates kept going up, up. the contribution rates kept going up, up, and up, right? And you can see that how now, post pension reform, and again, remember that the contribution rates are based, or for example, for 2018, are based upon the June 30, 16 pension valuation. And so there's a little bit of a lag here. But you can see that, again, once pension reform kicked in, that all of a sudden the contribution rates started to level off. Okay? So the hole is not being dug deeper, but we still have to fill the hole. Now let's look at the next slide. This is going to show where the GALLAS police is from a contribution rate perspective in relation to the other employers. So you can see that you're in the 66.81% in the current fiscal year. That puts you in that 65 to 70% band. Okay? But you can see that a number of the employers are paying contribution levels that are lower than where you're at. Okay? So your contributions are on the higher end and they're going, and they're continuing to go up. So that's important to realize because that's going to impact your budget going forward. So now let's go to the next slide. This is just, we're going to use as our example numbers from the police plan, but your fire plan is going to use similar type of math. So while we're going to use the police plan to, as the example, to illustrate the concept, your fire plan essentially works similar to that. So these are numbers from your plan. You can see that you're a little above $35 million in your total liability. You've got 18 and a half million in assets, and down here at the lower part of the bar, and then 17.7 million is unfunded. So your total, 35, almost 36, approaching $36 million I think here in your total liability, you can see that you don't have enough assets to cover that whole liability. So you've got this unfunded liability, and so you're going to be paying additional contributions to make up for that. Now, you've got about that $36.3 million in total liability, and if you were 100% funded, you would have $36.3 million in assets that you're earning. But again, you only have 18 and a half million in assets earning investor returns. So again, you're not hurting as high as investor returns as what the actuaries would forecast, expect, and so you've got to make that up. And that's what they calculate additional contributions for. Now, keep in mind again that regardless of your funded status, whether you were at 51.1% funded, or if you were at 100% funded, you're going to have an increase in that liability going forward in the next year because it's going to be discounted one less year. So this is kind of going to point that out in a graphical type of, in a spreadsheet type of way. You can see that your beginning FY '21 assets were 18,535.69. You have approximately 1.4 million in investment returns that are projected using the assumed rate of return of 7.3%. Your contributions were projected to be 2.1 million. And so your projected balance at the end of this year '21, based upon last year's actuarial valuation in 2020, was 22 million dollars. That's a pretty good increase. It's probably a $3.5 million increase. The challenge with that, again, is that that liability is amortized one less year. So that liability increases a little over 2.6 million. So you can see that you're making progress, but not quite as much progress as you might think, just looking at numbers. So this is another way to look at it. You can see the graph on the left is the same as what, and this is on Slide 22. Graph on the left is the same bar chart that we had before, breaking down the unfunded liability of 17.7, and the assets or values of 18 and a half million. And so now on the right, you can see that that is growing in this year '21, June 30, '21. You can see that liability has grown. You can also see, in the middle of this, you can see the ink investment earnings that you had and the additional contributions that you had, and you are making progress, just not quite as much progress because in that liability has increased. And you can see that liability of $2.6 million has been decreased. So now let's look on the next page. Let's look at how to fund it. You can see that the employee pays approximately 6%. The employer pays about 11%. The investment returns are about 41%, okay? Because you're funded about 51.1%, which is a little bit below average, right? And overall, people are earning off the rest, it's about 38, 39%. So you're a little higher than that, but you still have a UAL contribution of about 42% you're paying into. Now, if you're 100% funded, you would still be paying the normal cost. 6% is coming from, approximately coming from the employee, 11% from employer, but the other 83% would be coming from investment returns, or returns, or investment. Okay? So that's where the money would be coming from because you wouldn't have those other liabilities you have to contribute. And that's the largest portion of the contributions you're making this year forward. So now let's come back and revisit this pension formula again. You can see based upon this a little bit better, probably a little bit better understanding of contributions. Again, some of those are coming from the normal cost contributions, but you're also making up some unfunded liability contributions because that's what's required because your investment income is lower because your assets aren't as much as where the liabilities are at this point in the game. And again, that's only a snapshot in time. For that 100% funded is where you're at based upon the last, most recent actuarial valuation. As future actuarial valuations are updated or differences in actuarial valuation differences and investment return differences from the assumptions, that's going to adjust going forward. For example, you're going to, and also, for example, if people live longer or they live not quite as long. One of the things with COVID is potentially that some of the actuarial or the mortality tables are going, people's age when they die are potentially going to go down a little bit instead of up. Now, that may only be temporary because COVID may only be temporary, but COVID may have some long-term health issues and impacts as well that we don't fully understand. So just so you know, there are actuarial gains as well as potential actuarial losses out there. And there are also investment income losses, obviously, if it's less than assumed rate of return, like '20 was. '20 was only 0.91% because we were in the middle of the COVID downturn, the dip, and we hadn't fully recovered yet from those losses. But this year, the investment returns are probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 25 to 26, maybe even 27%. So it can be completely above returns. So there's a huge gain above the 7.3% assumed rate of return. But we go both ways, and but over time, and we'll look here a little bit about investment returns over time, you need to take a long-term perspective because pension portfolios are built for long-term investment returns. They're built to protect the downside, but also be able to maximize upside relative to the markets. So here's where we can look at. This is probably a pretty good graph that I had available that you can compare where we were as of March 31st to different timeframes to the investment return of 7.3%. You can see that about 20.4% as of March 31st was there significantly above in this year of 7.3%. But if you average it out over the last five, three, five, seven, 10 years, you can see the corresponding percentages of 8.95, 9.3, 7.8, and 7.6%. Now, the older, the longer timeframes are the ones that you really want to look at then. But just to contrast, these are the percentage of returns. So 7.6% over 10 years as of March 31st. The next slide is as the 10-year return as of two months later. May 31st was 7.98%. For the short term, was 26.59% year-to-date. Okay? But that's why it's important that just like the 0.91% last year, and now on the 26 to 27% return potential this year, what we're going to have, and that's going to be finalized, we expect, within about the next week or so. So you could be watching for that announcement of the final investment return. But you can see that when we try to project out at 7.3% assumed rate of return, it's not what we think we're going to get this year or last year or even next year. It really is taking over the long perspective because the contributions are made over the course of a employee's career. And that's going to be over the course of 10, 15, 20, 25 years. Okay? And so you need to think long-term when it comes to investment returns. So we've hit a lot of concepts, a lot of things, but certainly we'll open it up to any questions or comments or discussion that you may want to ask.
Seeing that our inflation rate right now is so high, do the investment returns, do they factor that in? Do we get more because due of the inflation?
Yeah, very good question. I mean, if you think about it, just think historically. Back in the, at 80s and 90s, inflation was higher than it's been since the Great Recession, right? So if you look at the investment returns for PSDRS, investment returns have been lower since the Great Recession than they were during the 80s and the 90s and the early 2000s, right? So absolutely, there is a correlation. It's not 100% correlation, but there is a correlation. But keep in mind that it really correlates, and it's more of a correlation longer term and over time than it is immediately because the, for example, interest rates are real low on debt right now. They're historical lows. Within the last year, we've seen, just like on mortgages, we've seen historic lows on interest rates on bonds. So if you're investing in bonds, if interest rates rise, that means bond prices also are affected and bond prices go up. And so you actually lose money on your, on bonds and from an investment perspective going forward when invest interest rates rise. Also, we're at all-time highs on the stock markets. So we don't know how exactly things are going to react and how the market will react, especially short-term when it comes to news with the Federal Reserve or other types of things when they raise interest rates and there's news of inflation. The markets may react negatively, but over time, as things, when you look over longer periods of time, over the seven-year, 10-year, 20-year, 25-year periods of time, when interest rates rise, people expect higher returns on their investment to be able to compensate for those higher costs that they're going to incur. And so the tendency is for earnings to be higher when interest rates rise. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions or things that you would like us to try to answer for you? Okay, well, we're available anytime. If you have questions into the future that we didn't get to today, if things come up, we're available to have discussions at any point in time. So you just have staff reach out to us and we can get you additional information as needed. Thank you very much. Appreciate the offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. So, Mr. Mayor, we also had our financial advisor, Mr. Vasquez, and we've had, and we're joined by Pat Walker, and we have Gene in the council chamber. Staff suggestion is that staff comes back with this information that we all heard and come up with some different options and different discussion on the staff's recommendation how to fund the $36 million funded liability. We'll plan on having another study session shortly on that.
Perfect. All right, is that it?
I believe so. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
Slow move.